Looks like everyone's here, so at this time we will call for the regular city council meeting for July 27th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America, to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Lisa, looks like we have everyone on on deck here this evening, so let the roll call show everyone is present. And we'll move on of the minutes from July 13th, 2020. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Lisa, on page, page three, about five sentences down. The sentence begins, councilmember Kennedy, then the word stated is in there, we don't need the word stated, it's just superfluous, so just strike that if you would. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle.
The minutes is amended.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and move to the agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment, please be sure to state your name and address. And also, please remember that we have a two-minute time limit, and we also have a second public comment at the end. Lisa, does it look like we have anyone wishing to speak this evening?
Not at this time, we do not.
I'll give it another minute here. All right, if we don't have anyone with their hand up, at this time, we'll move on from public comment. And on to the discussion of downtown with Nate.
All right, good evening, everyone. So yeah, the update for downtown, we posted on Facebook the results for the support downtown South Lion campaign. The post reached nearly 2,000 people and got almost 93 likes as of Monday morning, which is quite a bit more than what we normally get on our Facebook page, so I just wanted to highlight the engagement that we got from that post. As far as making businesses and other people aware of the grants that are available, I've been sending out information to business owners that we have in our email database as far as countywide statewide grants that are available. And then we also posted to the downtown South Lion Facebook page to try and reach as many people as we can. City manager Zelenek and I had a conversation about outdoor patio cafe permits. After some discussion, we determined that potentially waiving the $50, $50 fee for the permit would be prudent, given that the pandemic and everything that's going on, however, businesses would still be required to submit an application and have it approved by the city. I think feel like that's just something proactive that we can do to try and help our businesses out during this time. We received a proposal from SME engineering regarding the soil boarding borings for the parcel located at 390 South Lafayette Street, so we can kind of continue to move forward with that. I delivered, I think about, I can't remember the exact number, 18 to 20 more of the Oakland County reopening kits to businesses that had not received them. This time I went up to businesses outside of the DDA boundaries. The farmer's market was able to abstain, obtain a sponsorship from Wonder Jump. They're going to be offering a monetary donation this year instead of offering the bounce houses like they've done in the past. We've received the shop and dine local banners as well as a feather flags, those came in last week, so we're looking to get those out as soon as possible. Yeah, so we're also in conjunction with that, we've been developing, you know, kind of a cooperative marketing strategy, working with the chamber and the township as well to try and, you know, get people to shop downtown. Last week on Friday, Harlan Electric added sidewalk guys for added stability for the banner poles located on North Lafayette Street next to Real Estate One. They didn't add one of the guys next to the Leo J, Leo J Foley's building because they felt like it wasn't in the city easement, and I haven't been able to get in touch with the property owner to be sure that we could actually put the sidewalk guy in his property, so I'm going to be working on that this week and hopefully we can get him back to do the other side. The Cool Yule Committee met on July 22nd to determine the status of the event for 2020 and how it's going to look going forward. And and then today I met again with the individuals interested in opening the winery downtown, just to kind of get an update on how things are going for them and where they're at in their process, so hopefully they'll be having some good news, but right now it's kind of a difficult for them to get financing given the pandemic, so they're looking at alternative options and hopefully we can, we can move forward with that. So that's my report, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, just a couple of things, you said the Cool Yule Committee got together, was there any kind of an update or any decisions made or anything?
Yeah, so what we kind of recommend, or what the committee was considering was not having the event this year, just given all the uncertainties that we have. And kind of incorporating some more social distancing, like safe activities that we could do, maybe promoting people to celebrate the, you know, celebrate Christmas by decorating their house or, you know, some, some things like that, so.
Okay, and just really quickly, I thought, I know you haven't been here very long, but I had thought that we had already talked about waiving the fees for the outdoor patios. I thought we talked about it, but um, had people been paying that or have we just waived that for everybody?
I believe people have been paying it, to my knowledge they have been.
I had thought we said we were gonna waive it, but.
Okay.
Thanks.
Does anyone else, oh, councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
This is in relation to the, the fee for permit, I'm not against the idea, but at the same time, there's actual costs, I mean, we have people that do reviews of, you know, fire and safety and, you know, the, the whole nine yards, Kelly does her thing, so it's, this isn't frivolous pay, you know. I just don't want people thinking that we're just doing it so we enrich our coffers, there's actual work that's assigned to those costs, so. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? All right, thank you for that update, Nate.
Thank you.
We'll move over to Chief Vogel and the fire chief report.
Good evening, everybody. Real quick tonight, I had a good news from Chief Weir. He will be allowed to return to firefighting August 10th. There still will be some PT, but we did get signed off that he can return to work full the Monday, August 10th. Last item was, we got word, city manager did, that maybe the tornado siren was damaged behind the RCA building in the city parking lot. I went over there, Sowick also went over there, and we did see that it got hit. Paul then asked me if I could reach out to the Oakland County to try to figure out kind of who owns it, where we're at. It was a very interesting phone call today I had with the county. Ms. Tracy McGee is just very fascinating, interesting woman to talk to. So initially, when the sirens were put in, it was a cost that was split or shared by the city and the county. However, the city paid 75% and the county paid 25. But the county takes on all the maintenance. So there was some debate about who's going to pay for the replacement, but Ms. McGee confirmed today that the county will be taking on this cost. It's, she's guessing in the range of about $8,000, up to maybe 12. However, she did ask if we could help her out and try to figure out who damaged it. There's a little quick history where they were just trying to do some maintenance and a gentleman went there July 8th. He noticed that they were trenching by the pole, so he came back two weeks later and it had been knocked off the pole. I asked her, is it functional? She says, we have no idea. There's a test on Saturday, so I told her that I would have my crew sitting in the parking lot Saturday at 1:00 to see if it goes off. Her gut tells her that it'll probably go off because it has AC power and backup. Her fear is if a bad storm came through and we lost power in the city, that will not go off because she knows for a fact that the battery backup is destroyed. The whole box has been destroyed. Everybody's been kind of, I worked with Sowick today and he had his crews kind of check for cameras. Unfortunately, the RCA crews and all the contractors are saying they didn't do it. So the county is on the hook for this cost. We've looked really hard and nobody had cameras, I don't think, I think Chief Sowick can speak to that. So unfortunately, it's, it probably doesn't work, I asked for some timelines and she hopes to have something soon and back from the contractor or quote to repair it, and they will be taking that cost down. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, chief, does anyone have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? All right, thanks again, chief.
Yep.
We'll move on to the police chief report and chief Sowick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things real quick, I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Vogel and Patricia for jumping on the CARES Act application so quickly. The morning I got the email, I went over to see Chief Vogel and he is already working on that and getting some numbers and names there, so thank you too both of you. The speed radar sign was on nine mile for the last week. Recorded almost 28,000 vehicles traveling westbound on nine miles, very heavily traveled road. Average speed was 34 miles an hour and the high speed was 51 miles an hour, so that's not too bad, given the number of vehicles that went down there. Next council meeting, we will hopefully provide you with information on the new phone system that we have been researching and our administrative assistant Brienne has been working on that very diligently and so at the August 11th meeting, we're hopefully to introduce something to you guys to get something going for our phones through them later, so. And then just a final quick shout out to Patricia Tieran, she's a benefits coordinator and the numbers lady, and she's been very helpful providing some information in some contract language and some stats and numbers during the two police negotiations, a lot of comments from the officers about how professional and how well prepared she is, so I just wanted to give Patricia a shout out this evening, so that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thanks chief, does anyone have anything for Chief Sowick this evening? All right, thanks a lot, chief, oh, Lee, councilmember Dill, did you have something, go ahead.
Yeah, just really quickly, first, I just wanted to ask if you got, I can't remember what it's called, but the thing that you need for the, for the sign.
Yes, the car actually came in and we just have to go to a hardware store and get some heavy duty and long enough chain so that we can actually I guess, secure it to either a tree or something more secure, but once we get that chain and the locks, then we will be dispersing throughout the subdivisions and more, more specified locations, so we haven't forgotten about you, but we were, we're working on it.
Awesome, and then I just, speaking of shout outs, I just wanted to share this with you really quickly. I was speaking to a business owner about some things, how things are going during the COVID and everything and unprompted, completely unprompted, the business owner said to me, Chief Sowick is one of the best leaders we have in our community. He's real, rational, motivated, he's an asset to the city of South Lion. Every single interaction we have ever had with him has been professional, prompt and flat out pleasant. I hope he's our police chief for a long, long time. I just thought that was really great and I just wanted to share it with you.
I appreciate that, thank you. Definitely a team effort here and our guys are the same way, so um, I think the relationship we have with our community is just, it's, it's really, really good and it's just getting stronger and, but thank you for the comments, I appreciate it. I'll share that with my guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you chief for that update. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the presentation of the water and sewer rate analysis, Paul.
Tonight, we have Brian from Plant Moran here to give a follow-up presentation on the proposed utility rate models. At our first presentation, he incorporated and brought to us two different rate models for us to look at. Question was brought up at the meeting about potential third model, which he did in fact, put in a document which all of you have. We have to look at the models this evening, he'll be giving a brief presentation. Any changes to the utility rates would need to be made if we want to incorporate it in the next billing cycle, it would need to be made by August or we need to make it by November for the following billing cycle. And Brian, if you want to take it away, I'm not sure if you want to take over the screen or not, or if you need Lisa to do that, or if you're going to do that, or if you just want to talk.
If possible, I'll take the screen. Let's see if I can do that. If it's working, you should build us to a PowerPoint. Okay, so, good evening, everyone, nice to see everyone again, it's been a while. The changes to this presentation, if you'll recall when we, when I first presented a couple of months back, the end result was two different options. And we've added a third based on the conversation that we had, and that third option is kind of, it's in the middle. So I think we've achieved what you'd asked, but let's go back to the beginning, I'll give you a quick refresher course on what we did, why we did it, what the result was, and then I'll present the third option and we can discuss the pros and cons, as you may see them, or answer any questions you might have. So the reason why we did this model is because you have to raise your rates from time to time, you've done that from time to time. The, the rates have to generate enough cash flow to pay your ongoing day-to-day costs, the, the people that work for you. The cost of the plants that you have in order for them to function. The debt service that you took out in previous years to build those plants or build other infrastructure. And capital improvements, so you have a capital plan. You've had your, the city's engineers tell you what needs to happen in order for your plants to continue to function long into the future. And so that you can continue to provide service to the residents. But that stuff costs money, and so you have to raise rates in order to generate that money. Now, the model that we built is a 10-year model. And over the course of 10 years, you would accomplish the 10 years of capital improvements without having to take out any more debt. So the idea is that you have enough money in the bank to finance these projects yourself. Knowing that on the first couple of years, on the front end of the 10 years, you're going to dip into your cash reserves. But by the end of 10 years, cash-wise, you'll be in the same place that you are today. So at the end of 10 years, like a full cycle, you'll be back to where you are with your short-term liquidity. And you'll have the long-term benefits of all of these capital projects that your engineers are saying that you have to do. Now, we've, in addition to just saying, well, how much do we have to raise rates? We've also suggested a change to the methodology that you have used for a long time. Some might even say that it's, it's really just a philosophical change because there's no one right way to have rates. From client to client, community to community, we see all different rate-setting methodologies. Now, they all basically come down to how many units of water are we going to sell? But the, where the variability comes in quite often is how much of a fixed charge do we have? And how much of a variable commodity charge do we have? And in the city of South Lion, you had a fixed $6 charge as long as I can remember, and I've been working with you off and on since 1999. When we asked, nobody remembered when the $6 went into place because it's been a very long time, and so. But you also have a, a minimum usage charge, so that no matter how many, or how few gallons or thousands of gallons of water that a customer uses, they're going to pay for a minimum amount, and so we're raising or suggesting that you raise that fixed monthly fee, and we call that a readiness to serve charge. And the offset is on the variable rate, so over time, yes, you're going to absolutely have to charge more to the variable rate. But depending on the severity of that readiness to serve charge, it's going to depend on how much the commodity charge has to go up, so the bigger the fixed charge, the smaller the commodity charge has to be, and vice versa. So the suggestion in the options number one and two that we included the first time around was, are we going to recoup either 10% or 25% of your day-to-day operating charges through the RTS? Now, when we get to it, that the third option, the new option you haven't seen before basically splits it down the middle and says, what if we recoup 18% of our day-to-day operating costs? So not any of this capital, not any of the debt service, just paying our people, paying our vendors, running the plants. If we recoup 18% of those costs through the readiness to serve charge. And that readiness to serve charge is graduated between different size meters. So if you're a resident, you probably have a three-quarter inch meter or a one-inch meter and you pay one amount. But as the, the building goes up in size, if it's a larger commercial property, you have a larger meter. Therefore, you have more access to the capacity of the system, and therefore you should pay a higher rate for that capacity. And so the readiness to serve charge goes up on a graduated basis as meter size charge goes up. And we follow the recommendation of the AWWA, the American Water and Wastewater Association, so this is an industry standard practice. Now, I'm not going to go through all 30-ish pages of the, of this presentation because you saw most of this before. So I'm going to ask you if you're, if you're reading along at home or from your packet, we're going to flip to page 13. That talks more about the readiness to serve charge, so you had a, you have a, you have a choice. So the readiness to serve charge, it could be zero, you could go 100% on a commodity basis. Or you could go 100% readiness to serve charge in charge of fixed amount to everybody regardless of how much they're using. And so it's really, that's why I say it's a philosophy. What, what is your philosophy as a city as to how much you're going to pay? And historically, the city has said, well, no, if you use more water, we want you to pay more, if you use less water, you should pay less. So we're trying to, with this 18% recoupment, we're trying to hold the current low-usage customers, try to hold them harmless. So if you would, please flip to page 21. So in future years, years two through 10 of the model, in whatever you vote on, you're not locking the city in for 10 years. You're going to look at this every year and update the model accordingly, and some things are going to go up and some things are going to go down. But this is giving you a guideline now, here's what, what it's approximately going to look like over 10 years. Now, in years two through 10, if you keep doing this consistently and the capital list of projects doesn't change too terribly, you can pretty much be assured that your costs are going to be about the same and, and the model is going to be pretty accurate predicting what it's going to be, and the impact on customers in years two through 10 is not going to fluctuate greatly from year to year, because we're smoothing this increase over the 10-year period. So if it's five, if it's six, if it's 8%, it should be that approximately every year, give or take a point or two. But in year one, there's going to be a lot more variability because you are changing your philosophy on how you calculate the rates. And so anytime you have a change in philosophy, some customers are going to come out ahead, some customers are going to come out behind. It's not better or worse, it's just different. And so there is going to be more variability in the first year. But after that, everyone's treated the same, and so the raises should be pretty consistent, although because your rate has two components, the RTS and the commodity charge. And the RTS is based on your operational costs, and your operational costs go up at approximately inflation, so 2% to 3% a year. But when you have two different components and one goes up a little bit, that's the inflation, the other one goes up a lot more relatively. When you, on a case-by-case basis, not everyone gets treated exactly the same, you don't get exactly the same percentage increase on a customer-by-customer basis. Every customer gets the same commodity increase, every customer gets the same RTS increase, but it's the combination of the two that is going to affect different customers in slightly different ways in future years. But everyone is going to see a rate increase in future years, there are going to be instances that some, a very small percentage, it's very small percentage of your customers might see a rate decrease in year one because of this change in philosophy. So on page two is a summary of the, your current charges as well as the three options. And option three, because you haven't seen it before, I put it in red, so it stands out. But currently, you charge $2.46 a unit, goes up depending on which of these options you're choosing, it goes up by a different amount. Sewer is currently 450 to a unit, and remember, those are, you still have a minimum bill in this current section, so it's based on so many units per month. And then the different increases accordingly, based on the change in usage and the change in the RTS. So for an individual, so the next four slides show the same example for customers. Now, we picked a low-volume user, we picked a family of four, and then two commercial properties. And so over the next four slides, we'll see how those individual customers will be affected by the proposed rate increases. So on page 23, we have the low-volume residential customer. And the increase to them in, under option one, you know, you already saw this before. Under option one, they actually had an 18% decrease to their annual payments to the city for service. That's with the 10% RTS. With the 25% RTS, they saw 16% increase in year one. Option three, I mentioned before, we tried to hold these folks harmless. So we backed into 18%, which if you look at it, it's about halfway between minus 18 and a positive 16. So we backed into that 18% recoupment to get their first year change to be zero. In future years, their rate increase will affect them approximately 5%, is actually almost five and a half, but because we didn't go to decimals, we rounded it down to five for this one. On page 24, we have example customer two, this is the family of four. So they have 19% increase under option one, a 28% increase under option two, and a 24% increase in option three. Future years, so we rounded, this one actually I think came out to 5.8%, which we rounded up to six. So by and large, future years are approximately 5.5%. Option through, or excuse me, customer example number three, this is a commercial property with a two-inch meter, this is a very high-volume user. So because this is a high-volume user, this is one of your, your largest customers. The rate increase to them is less severe than it was to the family of four. But they're paying, you know, 8,600 bucks a year in total, not, you know, a few hundred or, or, you know, 500 or 600. They're paying significantly more, as a percentage, it's not as much. But a two-inch meter, if you go back to slide 22, that two-inch meter pays a readiness to serve charge of somewhere between $32 and $68 per month, whereas the family of four or the little old lady down the street, they're they're, they're paying, you know, say twenty-three, twenty-four dollars per month. So they're getting hit harder with the two-inch meter. They're getting hit harder on the readiness to serve. The commodity charge, still about five and a half to six percent in years two through ten. First year, a little bit of a, of a bigger pill to swallow. I'm sorry, I was on the wrong slide. The, the commercial property, you know, six to seven percent in the first year, six to seven percent in future years. Now, our fourth example is a low-volume commercial client. Now, low-volume commercial, this is a restaurant in town. Obviously, their, their low volume is more than little old lady down the street's low volume. But it's same idea. I mean, they, they get hit harder in the first year because they're a lower-volume charge, but they're getting that RTS jump. Future years, five-point-eight, six-point-oh percent in future years, two through ten. So first-year impact somewhere between nine and eleven depending on your option. So, I believe we have accomplished what we set out to do. The rate model is providing you with enough capital to do all of the construction that your engineers say you have to get done and do it within the ten-year period. You do not have to borrow any money. This is a point we hit in the last presentation, I haven't mentioned it today. You're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars by not having to go out to bond. And you're only able to do this because the city has shown great foresight in previous years by building up that cash reserve, not spending a lot of the money that came from tap-ins. So that, that tap-in money has been accumulating for years. You've spent some of it, not the majority of it. And now you have it to be, to function as your own banker. And that really is saving, like I said, hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next ten to twenty years. Because if you bonded, it likely would be a ten, a twenty-year bond. So by being your own banker, you're keeping your rates lower than you would be had you had less money in the bank and had to go out to borrow. So where we're at now, it's time for the city to make a decision. Now, you've got three options, ten percent, twenty-five percent, or option number three now is eighteen, somewhere in the middle. Decide what you want to do in terms of what rate increase you want to pass. And once you decide, if you're done, you could always send us back to the drawing board too. But I think that we've given you the options that, that show a variety of different impacts to your customers. There's a, like, there's a million different ways we could do this. But I don't think it's financially making sense to do a fourth, fifth, sixth option. They're all going to come back with some variability. So pick an option. We can then finalize our written report. And because you're not a client that has to go through our quality control process, we have our standards department that has to review everything and make sure we followed all the rules of the accounting profession. We'll then publish that, deliver it to you. Now, whether we do that before or after you vote, that's entirely up to you. But we're not going to finalize it until I know which option you want because the written report says, based on this option, here's what the rate increases are and so on. And then, once you voted on that, then it is up to the city to update the billing software so that whether it's this next cycle, cycle thereafter, the customers receive the right bill with the newly revised rates. Any questions about anything I've covered today?
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I, quite honestly, I'm leaning towards the eighteen percent. It seems to be the most equitable to the general population. My concern here, the RTS, so you had spoke to the idea of a high-volume user paying thirty-two to sixty-eight dollars for their, their meter? And that's, well, it just sounded as though that was supposed to have been the equity stake that gives them the same buy-in that a family is getting in. That just doesn't seem even remotely close.
Well, it's based on meter size. So the residential customers are all going to be three-quarter, one-inch meters, and we treat them the same. The increase goes up starting with the one-and-a-half inch meters. So a commercial customer, if they have a one-inch meter, they'll pay the same RTS as a, a family or a individual resident. All based on meter size. We don't want to have different rates for commercial versus residential.
My concern is, the high-volume user, I mean, the commodity is water. So if there ended up a lion's share of water disproportionate to, I mean, I guess, I don't know what the breakdown is. The aggregate of residential as opposed to what commercial people are using. You know, it's not like a Nestle bottling kind of thing. But at the same time, I can see where some places would end up using a great deal more water than what anybody could have conceived of. And to, to have the infrastructure that's been paid for and everything, giving them the benefit of having that use at this, the potential of a thirty-dollar meter fee increase seems a little bit hard to swallow.
Joey, I, I'm sorry, I guess, is your question that we're, that it's not equitable, that they've already paid for the access? Or I guess I'm not following, sir?
Paid today, starting pretty much from scratch at this point. So
Yes and no, the system has to be updated.
Right. So that's, that's how their equity stake comes in with the future improvements.
Well, the readiness
So.
You make a good point. But this, this methodology in terms of a combination RTS and commodity charge, most communities in Metro Detroit follow something like this. The only difference between them is how much do they want to recoup through the, the fixed cha, fixed charge, the readiness to serve? So I've got some communities that would say, you know what? We want to get fifty or seventy-five percent and guarantee that we have the cash flow because for them, there's less variability or they don't, they don't want the risk of more variability in how much water is used. I have others that say, you know what? We're going to have no readiness to serve, no fixed. We're okay with the risk that we're going to have. Some years, we sell a lot of water, some years, we sell very little. But their philosophy internally is, you should only get charged for exactly what you use. And by doing it on a pure one-hundred percent commodity basis, you have the ability as a resident, I'm not going to use any water this month. I'm not paying anything. Why I don't think that's the, the right way to go is because whether you use water or not, someone had to read your meter, someone had to send the bill. There's insurance on the system, there's all that maintenance so that when you want to turn on the faucet, the water's there.
I understand that. And I guess perhaps my, my question should have been leaning towards what drove the commodity rate, the usage rate? I mean, they're the, the least impacted as the escalation in use use or goes up, so.
All your capital, all your new capital is being paid through the commodity. All your debt service is being paid through commodity. And if you go with option three, eighty-two percent of your operational costs will be going through the commodity. The RTS is only capturing a fraction of the operational costs.
I guess I, quite honestly, now that I'm thinking about it, without having an understanding of what the general residential volume of water as opposed to commercial side of things, what the actual use is, it's sort of hard to make any kind of a judgment call on how that impacts our, our potential rate, one way or the other. So you say high volume, I'm assuming, I mean, like MST uses in staggering amount of water. So that, but that's unprocessed. And I don't know how much pumping has had a great deal more processing going on by that water except for pulling it out of the ground, so. All right, I'll let somebody else speak if they'd like to. I just wanted to bring that up that I have concerns about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Brian, I want to thank you for putting together that third option. That, that's the other option I'm inclined to go with as well. I think it fits, it fits the, the basic users probably most favorably. And it sets the stage for us to, you know, going forward. And I think just to answer Councilmember Kibble's position, if we, we're trying to get a feel, and it isn't going to be in down to gallons, but if we're trying to get a feel, some sort of magnitude on the, the volume of residential users versus commercial. I think somebody said at one time, and I certainly don't know which are high-volume, which are low-volume, et cetera. We've got about three hundred businesses in the city, and we've got about thirty-three hundred residences, thereabouts. So it's about a, you know, one to ten factor that the, we're, the bulk of this is going to be geared, I'm guessing, probably towards residences more than commercial properties just based on the number of facilities. Just to guess, certainly don't know the volume, okay? But I'm just looking at the number of buildings that are out there and water. But again, Brian, I appreciate you putting this together. And from my part, I'd, I'd like to see option three go into effect. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead. Hope you're on mute, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Still on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I'm glad you did option number three. I was interested in looking, actually, Brian, at another option to see where the compromise would be. And I like the numbers that are showing up on option number three. My question pertains to the rate that would be charged, whatever that rate's going to be. What, you said that that particular rate would take care of servicing debt, it would take care of accumulated capital, and it would cover the rest of the operational costs. Is that what the, the rate cost would be?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So when the bond gets paid off and there is no more debt servicing to go, then that component drops out. So does that mean then that there would be a comparable drop in the water rate once our debt servicing expires?
So I don't remember if that bond is paid off in the next ten years. If it is, then if it does get paid off fully in the next ten years, it doesn't correspond to a drop then because we've smoothed the rate increase out over the entire ten years. So in any one year, depending on the debt service payment or the new capital, your spending goes up and down. But we want to have as, as even, as smooth a rate increase every year so that the customers grow accustomed to it versus saying, well, this year, we're going to do more capital, so we're going to jump it up twenty percent. And then next year, we're going to cut it fifteen, and then the following year, we're going to jump again. It becomes really chaotic and the, the marketplace does not like it. So it's a very good question. But in that year that the debt service falls off, it's being offset in a previous year by perhaps the, the cash being generated in that year isn't enough to pay the debt service. So it all evens out over the ten years.
So in other words, then, in the smoothing technique that you are using, then you are, fixing might be the wrong word, but you are holding, holding constant three variables over the next ten years. You're going to hold debt servicing constant regardless of whether we pay off the bond or not. That, I mean, that's going to be held constant because that's part of the formula. Capital formation, in order to fit into the smoothing model, then do you have projected numbers of what you think the capital formation should be over the next ten years?
Yes, we took it right from the engineer.
Okay, so that component's in there. And you've already done a projection of what you think the operational costs are going to be over the next ten years. So you're going to hold those three components constant over the next couple of years based on your projections. And that's how you're coming up with what this water usage rate is going to be.
Correct.
So even though something changes in one of those components, the, the service charge stays the same?
Well, your charge is going to go up every year. The rate increase for the commodity goes up every year. The RTS goes up by approximately inflation because it's going to follow your operational costs. So if your operational costs go up two-point-eight percent because you've got wages and fringes and healthcare and insurance and utilities, if all those together go up two-point-eight percent, your RTS is going to go up two-point-eight. If it goes up three and a half, your RTS goes up three and a half.
So you're doing more than just smoothing. What you're doing is, you've got this formula in place, but yet you're still going to provide for an increase in the water usage over a period of time. Smoothing to me says, is that you have said, this is what you're going to need completely over the next ten years. And what we're going to do is, we're going to average that over some sort of mathematical formula and smooth everything so that each year, you are paying the same amount. To me, that's, that's a smoothing method. You're going to pay the same amount regardless of whether you use a lot of water or don't use a lot of water, or whether you need to build capital that year or whether you don't. That's why you smooth it so that you don't feel the variations or the gyrations that you would feel.
It's a smoothed increase. The increase every year will be approximately the same.
Okay, there we go.
If we were to charge the same number for ten straight years, councils, this council or a future council, in those first few years, would really struggle to pass a rate increase for more than what you need in those years in order to build up a war chest to then spend it down over the next, say, five years. That would be very difficult. It's a lot to put on a council to, to ask them to charge more than what you need. So by doing this, you're saying, we're okay with an annual rate increase, but we know this rate increase is going to be kind of protected. There's a bit of a cap on it. But we're, we're going along with it year after year for ten years.
I think, yeah. I, I think it cleared it up. You used the right word. You're smoothing the increases.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kennedy, did you still have something?
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for Brian this evening? Well, Brian, thank you very much. That was very informative. We're very thankful for you guys providing that third option. And obviously, we'll be in touch here down the road.
Okay, yeah. I was just going to say, when councils ready to vote on that, just let me know what it is and we'll finalize our report.
Thank you, Brian. Paul, yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
What we need, need here tonight really is the direction. And if, I know a couple of members have expressed the eighteen percent. So we can give Brian the go-ahead for him to finalize the model and the report and go through the standards department for that quality review. And then he publishes the report. And then we bring that back to council to make the final decision at that particular time regarding a rate increase and the potential implementation, implementation date.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
The only other comment, and I apologize for not bringing it up earlier. I believe that you gave us two dates in which to implement this, this change, either in August or November. Is that correct?
Yeah, we would just need to make it by either August, if we want it included in the September, October, November billing, or by November to begin in the December, January, February billing. So it's not necessarily in either one of those months, but by the end of those particular months to implement it in the next billing cycle.
Well, I'm looking at the, uh, maybe that's a bad example. It's customer number three, the commercial high-volume. And when you look at, and I'm on page twenty-five, it shows that currently, let's say, a high-volume person, and I'm just going to round things off, is that paying a total of about paying a total of about $8,100. And then if we choose option number three, they go up to $8,600. So they're seeing, I I know the increases, it it shows here about 6%, but the dollar increase is about $500. And I just wonder if maybe we could think about putting off approving this until November or approving it now or whenever the timetable is, but not have it go in fact, you know, make it effective starting November 1st. Because we have a lot of businesses that are really struggling and you have businesses that still are not open. And let's take a gym, for example. A gym is not open yet. A yoga studio is not open yet. But they still will be responsible for paying utilities and they have no revenue to pay the utility less than paying increase. So I'm just throwing it out there for thought that I agree with everything, but maybe we give our businesses maybe a couple more months to maybe see where this lockdown goes for some of those businesses to get them back and going. I I don't know. I'm just, that's just my thought.
Uh, Councilmember Dill, go ahead, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I would agree with that also because I think that we could use some time to figure out, I mean, just to really communicate it well. Um, I think that we could use that time for that. So that's all.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I think the other part that comes into play here is if we do implement it at the the end of this year, then the implementation will be based on that time period where we actually charge for water and sewer at the same rate as opposed to applying it to the summer months where there's a variance between the two. So the people will get to see exactly what the bill is going to be for three of the four four quarters they're going to be paying for. So I I agree with that. I think I'd rather see it towards the end of the year. But I think that provides Brian and and Paul with the information they need so they can go ahead and prepare what they need to prepare and we'll just get, you know, be ready to implement that at the at the end of the year there for that last quarter.
Yeah. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I would like to to find out whether I'm I'm on the right track. I'm thinking a high volume user would be things like restaurants and that, wouldn't you? I mean, they seem like they're always washing things and what what would be a typical high user?
Car wash.
Well, yeah, okay. Um, so we we only have four high users.
Well, I didn't go through all of your users to say whether they're high or low. I just picked two that had a disparate usage to call one high and one low. But a car wash is the high volume user in this example.
That certainly makes sense. Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm having a misunderstanding with the idea of November. That's that makes sense.
So yeah, so we would need to adopt it by November to begin the December, January, February cycle. So if council is in agreement with which was discussed tonight, if that third option that was discussed tonight, that 18% is what you're what you concur with, we will have Brian proceed with that, go through the finalized reports, and then we will prepare all the information for council to review. And then we'll set a date for actually council to make that decision regarding the rate increase. We will communicate and set that plan together for communicating that with the public, whether it's the residents or the businesses. We're getting ready to start that anyways because we want to make people aware of the improvements that are taking place at the water plant. We've already discussed how we're conveying some of those things to the public. And then we would discuss that there would be an increase that will be forthcoming to pay for those planned improvements. And and a part of this also does incorporate every year with council is an annual review during budget time that does use, everybody sees what's going to happen within the upcoming year. And as Brian had mentioned, working with our staff and the engineers, we've outlined the improvements for the next so many years. And when you start to look at what those capital improvements are, you see what's within the budget and what's actually going to happen and why we need to make those those increases happen. So if everyone is in concurrence, does everybody agree with the moving forward with that third option on that 18%? We'll have Brian prepare that information.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
We will do that and we'll bring it back before council.
Great. Thanks again, Brian.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, we are on to old business number one, amendment to resolution approving commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate application for 1-855-HOLDINGS LLC at 135 East Lake Street.
Please, if you want to proceed.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you were ready for me. Um, this is already the, you've already approved the exemption certificate. There was language that was alternate language included in the state's standard form that we took out because the statute doesn't require it be in there. And there was optional language. And since it was inapplicable, we took it out. When we sent the resolution up to the state, they indicated that they require that language in the resolution. So we prepared an amendment to the resolution and it explains that we've already approved it. This is what we ordered. And then I added, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of South Lyon, that resolution 02-20 is hereby amended to provide that the taxable value of the property proposed to be exempt plus the aggregate taxable value of property previously exempt and currently in force under PA 210 of 2005 does not exceed 5% of the total taxable value of the city of South Lyon. So once we, the city council approves this resolution, we'll send this up to the state and we'll be all set, I hope.
So anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Walton.
I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the amendment for a resolution approving commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate application for 1-855-HOLDINGS LLC at 135 East Lake Street.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Eaton, please lead us in a roll call vote, please.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Old business number two this evening, resolution approving proposed charter amendment ballot proposition.
Uh, this is mine again, and this is as we've been discussing for a while now, the ballot amendments um, that we're going to propose for the charter. And we, the city council decided that for the November 2020 election, we're going to make every effort we can to put one of the amendments being the charter amendment. So what is in front of you is the resolution that city council must approve. Um, the format of this is what was required by the assistant attorney general, where it lays out the purpose of the amendment, the wording, a red line of the current wording, and then the actual charter amendment proposal language is on the second page. I did hear back from the assistant attorney general who um, has actually worked with us on the language and he's approved this language on an informal basis. And then once city council approves this resolution, if it's acceptable or as amended by you tonight, then we will send this for formal review to the governor who then will forward it to the assistant attorney general, likely the person who's already given us informal approval. So we should be okay to get this on the November ballot. George Alworth, the individual I've been speaking with at the assistant attorney, at the attorney general's office has indicated to me that he believes that since this is a simple one amendment, we should not have a problem. But what I propose is we, if there is a problem, if we don't have it back in time, we bring this back to council at your next meeting, August 10th, and then council can make the decision as to whether or not you want to put it on the ballot having not received the formal approval in light of all of the facts that you have in front of you. We're hopeful that by August 10th, we'll have formal approval. But in the event we don't, you'll then have to make that call.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution approving proposed charter amendment ballot proposition.
Second.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dill, to approve the resolution to the resolution approving proposed charter amendment ballot proposition. Any further discussion? City Clerk Eaton, would you please lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business this evening. Number one, Plant Moran professional service agreement audit engagement.
Cities you point in, we're in for less than a year, provide us with our financial statements. We provide you a professional services agreement and engagement letter which will provide an audit of the city's financial statement in and for the year ended June 30th, 2020. The fees will range from $58,000 to $63,000, which is consistent with the prior year fee range and takes into consideration the potential economic uncertainty for the city due to the recent pandemic. The fee will be billed accordingly to several city funds, audit line number 807, based upon distribution of work. We provided the agreement and audit engagement letter and a letter from the city attorney addressing review of the agreement possible course of action, this prove or not approve that professional services agreement or audit engagement letter of Plant and Branford amount not to exceed $63,000.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I move that we approve the spoken motion.
Ooh, I I I didn't hear who we had coming in on that. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Walton. So we have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Walton to approve professional services agreement audit engagement letter with Plant Moran for an amount not to exceed $63,000. Any further discussion? Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to address a question to the city attorney. And that pertains to is this becoming common, paragraph number 20, the release and hold harmless?
It's becoming common everywhere.
Really?
Yeah. And we even, a lot of the communities for parks and rec, I've done for a lot of our communities, parks and recs for their participation agreements. We're putting waivers in everything. Because you never know. And even in act of God, the force majeure language.
Yeah.
Um, you know how it lists all the different, now we list pandemics and epidemics.
Really?
All being changed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else to discuss? We have a motion in a second. Clerk Eaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passing. We're about to do business number two this evening, fire department rescue truck body replacement.
Um, just a quick explanation. We have a vehicle that is becoming more and more utilized on a daily basis. And when I came almost three years ago, identified a need that the compartment space is not enough. Um, when I began this adventure about a year ago, I got a quote of about $67,000. I got a hard quote of about 66.9%. However, because of some time and COVID costs, we've had a slight increase. I know that you all approved 67,000. However, we're now at 68,945. I was able to save some money, so there should be zero impact on my total budget. We approved, you all approved $5,000 for a hose tester. I was able to get one cheaper at $3,800. I'm pretty confident that I could find another $600 in my budget to cut. I can't stress enough how important I feel this project is, and I would love to answer any questions and all questions you might have.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, first off, Rob, you and I have already talked about this. We've exchanged some emails and so forth. And again, I just want to compliment you on the thoroughness of the spec that you put together for this RFP. I mean, it was extremely thorough. You and I spoke about a couple of specific areas in particular. And I think personally, you've done a great job specifying exactly what you want so that you'll get exactly what you need. And to that effect, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the installation of a poly body on our supplied Ford F-350 chassis for a cost of $68,945 to CSI from account
That's correct.
Councilmember Kibble, you had made a hand motion earlier. Did you have any further comment on that?
Well, I just wanted to to back up the idea that this is a beautifully written spec. This is a, it's so specific. Uh, clearly, he's given it an enormous amount of thought and I can't help but think that this will be a real benefit to the department. So I was, I was happy that he was willing to go through that.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Did anyone else have any further discussion?
I got a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Chief Vogel, just throw this out there. Uh, from what I gather, you were sort of anticipating an increase in cost, but you got blindsided by other increases that nobody could have predicted and so on and so forth. And this is still within the range of feasibility, but on another piece of equipment or vehicle, would you just consider the option of, well, let's, if it's going to go up that much, why don't we just look at another truck, a used truck somewhere else? Did you ever consider that that option in this situation?
So, real quick, we are keeping the current chassis, taking off the old body. I will donate that or give it to DPW because it could be utilized there. And then with this new poly body, we keep this forever. When the chassis wears out, we take it off and we put it on a new chassis. To buy a complete truck would be in the realm of over $150,000.
Wow.
I I I I feel like I worked, CSI has been great. All the vendors were great. This was an unforeseen. I thought we had a locked in price. And then we realized that the poly's going up. Everything just kind of crept up a little bit. You know, I'm working really hard to save money. For example, I will be driving this truck to railing myself to save money. I I I feel that this is a great price for the future. This truck goes to 80% of our calls, maybe 75. And right now, it's just we're struggling to carry everything we need. We keep getting great equipment, for example, the Lucas device on a grant. We have to pack it in so tight that I just, I I knew this was something we needed to do. And I I I'm sorry that the price went up $1,800, but I I really feel that this is, I I just think it's important. And like I said, we should have zero effect on my total budget because I did cut some corners on other projects. So.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just one, one other comment if I could. As I've, as I stated earlier, I mean, the As I've, as I stated earlier, I mean, the, and councilmember Kibble reinforced, I mean, the quality of this specifications in this purchase are exceptional. I would encourage the city manager to share this document with other department heads for similar mobile equipment that they might purchase so that, again, they get everything that they need and, and get exactly what they're looking for when they make future purchases. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Do we have anyone else with any further discussion on this? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Sort of to piggyback on that, the only thing that I was concerned about with the specificity of this spec have an opportunity for the vendor to be able to kind of not give the discount that he might have because it's so comprehensive and specific that he might be able to hold our feet to the fire. And so I don't know if that might end up coming in play if some of the other departments might end up looking at it in those same types of terms, because sometimes you can get a great deal of discount by, by softening your view about a particular aspect of, you know, the drivetrain or whatever it might end up being, that'll still function in your need. So, but nonetheless, this is a tremendous document that they could all gain, gain benefit from for knowing what it is that they need to be looking for, so.
I just wanted to make sure that when this truck is complete, it's what we wanted and we're covered for defects and warranties and specs. And that's hence the detail.
Yeah.
All right. Well, with that, we have a motion by councilmember Kennedy, supported by councilmember Walton to approve the installation of a poly body on our supplied Ford F-350 chassis for a cost of $68,945 to CSI from account 100-335-978. City Clerk Eaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Great work.
Thank you.
New business number three this evening, first responder hazard pay premiums program.
This one's also me.
Okay.
This was a team effort. I can't take all the credit for this one. The state of Michigan came up with some programs to try to help small businesses, restaurants, cities to cover some costs that COVID came, cost the city. Ms. Tarranen and I and Paul and all the department heads, Chief Solvik, Doug Barney, we worked really hard to work on that grant, and then this grant fell in our lap. And for a department that I think as a city as a whole, I think Paul did an awesome job for the employees. Unfortunately, for the fire department, we couldn't have COVID days. We couldn't have sick time because we're a paid on call department. Over half my staff had to have their pay cuts, paychecks cut pretty dramatically because they couldn't come to calls. We didn't go to training. If they were an EMT, we didn't allow them to come to medical calls. So when this, when I saw this program and I saw how it was written, I, I studied it very hard trying to figure out, is there a way that we can get our police officers and firefighters and EMTs the money? Did you have a question, councilman Walton?
No, I'm just waiting. I'll wait until you're done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I'll wrap it up. So Ms. Tarranen and I worked really hard to try to get the wording right. I think there was some concerns about maybe putting the cart in front of the horse, but I think that out of all the research I did, I feel comfortable that if approved, we apply for the grant and if we get the grant, and that's the big question, if we get the grant, then we would pay our people the premium of $1,000 per person. Unfortunately, not all my employees could get it because of the way the grant was written, but majority would. And I do thank Chief Solvik and, and city manager, Zolnik and Ms. Tarranen. I, I, I feel this is very important for my people.
Thank you, chief. Councilmember Walton, go ahead. Oh, Patricia, did you have something to add to that before?
I did, but it's okay. Councilmember Walton can go. It's fine.
I'm gonna, I personally, we all know how I feel about healthcare and the COVID, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve this. I think that depending, depending on the Michigan Department of Treasury grant approval, I don't know if you guys want me to read this exactly word for word here, but I'd like to make the motion to approve it.
Thank you, councilmember Walton. Patricia, you can go ahead now with anything you had to add.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that this program is very specific based on the requirements of the Michigan Department of Treasury that only licensed firefighters, law enforcement officials, and licensed EMTs would qualify. So I just wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you for that. So we have a motion from councilmember Walton.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Walton, supported by councilmember Dill. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Eaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Patricia, for all your help on that. I pros pro and, and Chief Vogel and Chief Solvik as well. That's.
Yes, on behalf of the fire department, thank you very much. This is, it means a lot to me. Thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you.
New business number four this evening is resolution for Main Street Oakland County COVID-19 Small Business Relief Program Grant Agreement. Nate, I'm assuming you're going to take the lead on this one.
Actually, I will, Mr. Mayor, and Nate will chime in on this as well. When the city DDA conducted the crowdfunding campaign with encouragement from Main Street Oakland County to assist the businesses affected by COVID-19, the city South Lion was successful in raising funds to receive the maximum matching amount from Main Street Oakland County. In order to receive these funds, release it, there must be a resolution passed by the governing body of South Lion and Oakland County. We've attached the resolution, authorizing the approval of Main Street Oakland County and the Small Business Relief Grant Program between Oakland County and the City of South Lion Downtown Development Authority and Main Street Oakland County Small Business Relief Program Grant Agreement between Oakland County and South Lion Downtown Development Authority. So we need adoption of this in order to move forward with receiving the funds so we can provide the distribution of those particular funds.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution for the Main Street Oakland County COVID-19 Small Business Relief Program Grant Agreement between Oakland County and the South Lion Downtown Development Authority.
I support.
So we have a motion from councilmember Kennedy, supported by councilmember Walton. Do we have any further discussion on this? City Clerk Eaton, if you could please lead us in a roll call vote again.
Yes. Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you for everyone's effort on that.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
With that, we will move on to the budget this evening. Okay, if no one has anything on the budget, we'll move on to the manager's report.
There's a few items we have discussed, and I've provided you information regarding our zoning ordinance rewrite. The planning commission have been reviewing the changes, provided the ordinance. We've now provided all of you a copy. I'll give you ample time to review that document so we can have a joint meeting between city council and planning commission. The governor has extended the allowable ability of municipalities to continue to hold virtual meetings. Right now is extended until August 11th. It is tied into the emergency. But there also is an additional 28-day provision for scheduling other meetings, which does take it to September. I did have discussions with the Michigan Municipal League today, and they expected that state of emergency most likely will be extended. But I will advise you on that. And if you want to change the way we're holding those meetings, we certainly can do that. This does provide us some means where all of us can attend and other people can provide, or have attendance without feeling concern regarding potentially the COVID issues. I have provided you information regarding a solid base report from our SOC and the recent activities. And the last item is the census. Right now, we're at approximately 82%. I know this gets brought up several times at council meetings. I, I did discuss some items with the newspaper. They asked me some questions regarding the census. And I did discuss with them the amount of potential dollars we could potentially lose either through community development block grant or road funding. Our actual Act 51 funds are partially based upon population as well as major miles of roads or local, local miles of roads for local streets. And for every resident that does not supply or does not, is not included within the census, we potentially will lose $75 per resident. So over a 10-year period, that's $750. And if right now we're only at 82%, if we lose potentially up to 1,000 people within our census, we could potentially lose in the life of this particular census of $750,000 worth of road funding to our city. So it's important that we get that out to the residents. I know the follow-up is going to occur very soon where the census people are going to be knocking on doors, but I can't pressure, put this out there enough to tell people to please fill out the census form, get it in there because it is a direct relation to how much funding we get for the city of South Lion. And that's all I have. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have anything for city manager Zolnik this evening?
Just really quick.
Yep, go ahead, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wonder, I know I asked this before, and I cannot remember what you said, but when we are going to communicate the, the rate increases, how are we going to let people know? They really mentioned some good points on how, why this is a good thing for us and how we don't have to go to bond or anything like that. So I just wondering what the plan would be to communicate that.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be several different ways. One, obviously by these particular meetings, two, you know, through social media, Facebook website, that sort of thing, as well as perhaps doing something within the newspaper. I've already had discussions with our engineers regarding this first segment of plan improvements that we have, which is the water tank. And maybe some of you have noticed some of the activity that's been going on over there. We've had several calls about that. We want to show people what exactly we're going to be potentially doing with these dollars that are needed for these rate increases. And then the long-term plan for getting that forward. So that is, it's, it's a gradual effect that we're going to do. And the first step is going to be discussing the tank. But we, you know, planning to get any of that out there many, many ways, as many ways as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Okay, I was hoping to get some insight into what form of the request for proposals regarding the old library property has been posted publicly. And has there been any inquiries?
We have not posted that. We do not have that out there yet. We're working on that and finalizing those details. Myself, the city attorney, and our planner have been reviewing those documents. We want to make sure we get that out there because as well as review with city council about, we're looking forward to try to get a home built within that particular neighborhood that is conducive, and that is pretty much what looks like it belongs there instead of getting something that does not belong there.
Certainly, that, that, there is a great deal of concern about that, so.
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering, let's see, the the status for the buildings at 110 and Moe's. So I've, I've heard that there's supposed to be potential action, and I was wondering if there's follow-through on that.
Yes, I had a discussion with the building official and our ordinance enforcement officer regarding 110. They're moving forward with potential action on that particular property. They have had conversations with the realtor that was originally looking at the property, and then the property was subsequently sold. The building which you described as the old Moe's garage, we have had discussions with the property owner and their intent and their expressions to us that they are looking at demolishing that particular building. So right now, you may see some utility work being done on site. That was their given intention to do that.
Oh, I'm, I'm great to see some fruitful return on, on looking into these things. I mean, we've backwards try way to help them move forward. And if they're not going to end up taking advantage of that, we need to start getting pushy. So I, I appreciate that. Besides the, the painting over at that draft street, has there been any indication? Are they getting overtly out to the public to try to sell that place? Or is he looking to re-operate or?
I, we, I have not had discussions. I know Nate is still on the Zoom right now. Maybe he can comment. I know he had some comments with individuals out there, but we have, they have not expressed to us, yes, we're selling, yes, we're doing this. They were preparing it, from my understanding, making it look better, whether they decided they're going to open up a business and as with the current owners or just use it as a marketing point to try to sell the property because it does look in better condition.
Well, it certainly looks a lot. So that's. Do you have anything further on that, Nate, besides what your report earlier had said?
Um, just that, a couple of weeks ago, I met with the property owner, and he said they're looking to sell it. The reason they painted it is to try and make it more presentable so somebody would want to buy the property. So that's all I have to add for that.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's all I have.
Kurzweil, you had something? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just had two comments that are sort of in line with two of the council members that have already spoken. With respect to the South Lion Library, I also had a question about that. Is, are you going to put deed restrictions? Because I think you can put some deed restrictions in there stating that the house shall be X amount of square feet, whatever you want. I mean, as long as they're reasonable and they're not discriminatory, I, I think you can put some deed restrictions in a deed that would guarantee that whoever is the holder of the deed conforms or the suit can, city can sue then for violation of the deed.
Absolutely. When we receive the proposals, there's a grading system within the proposal that does identify a point system based upon them following certain items within the request based upon making it conducive to the neighborhood, based upon price, based upon timing, based upon option, based upon years of experience in doing things like this. But that's definitely included.
Is it going in the deed?
Is, city attorney, you want to comment on that?
Our discussions have been to simply put it in the RFP. Award the, the sale of the property to an individual, require a development agreement be signed.
We can hold, we can hold them to that within the RFP in order to do that. If they fail to follow those requirements, then it becomes null and void.
Okay. Next is with respect to promoting or advertising or educating the public on the rate increase with respect to the water commodity. Hopefully, you're going to use the cable commission. I would think that they could do a great job of doing some interviews with people or, you know, showing some of the areas in the city that, you know, a water main is broken and why it's necessary to build this fund. So this may be a great opportunity for them to, you know, help with, with this particular issue. So that, that's all I had. Thank you.
That's an excellent idea.
Does anyone else have anything for the city manager this evening? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Well, I just want to confirm, the RFP is essentially, we're going to create a contract. So if they, if they violate the contract, then it, then it goes null and void, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, great. With that, we're going to move on to public comment this evening. Please remember to state your name and address, and we have a two-minute time limit. City Clerk Eaton, does it look as if we have anyone interested in public comment this evening?
Nobody's raising their hand.
All right. At this time, we will close public comment, and we'll start with our council comments. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, why don't you start us off this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to congratulate a number of businesses from our community that were recently recognized as the best in their category in the metro Detroit area. As part of the WDIV Vote For The Best Campaign, these businesses were chosen based on the number of votes they received from their customers. So the first business I want to recognize is Martin's Hardware, which received a first-place award in the independent hardware category while competing against twenty-one other hardware stores. Also achieving a first-place award was Venue South Lion in the category for Detroit Apparel. They were competing against twelve other similar businesses. Next, the Salem South Lion District Library won second place as best library, competing against twenty-seven other libraries across the metro Detroit area. The Grand Trunk Home won a second-place award in the home boutique category, beating out forty-two other entrants for that recognition. And finally, the Lemon Tree won a second-place award in the gift shop category, competing against fifty-two other stores from across the metro Detroit area. In addition, while they did not win in their respective categories, I also want to recognize South Lion Cycle and the Witch's Head Brewing Company for their participation in the campaign as well. So once again, congratulations to all the businesses. We indeed are very fortunate that you are all part of our community. Congratulations once again. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Richards?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just make a couple of short comments tonight. Uh, following up on what Mr. Kennedy said, uh, about mentioning the bicycle shop, uh, those guys are tremendous over there with the products that they have. But right now there's a national shortage on uh, bicycle tires. The manufacturers have shut down enough so it's broken a chain of uh, circulation and everything and none. Very few people have got bicycle tires today. Uh, moving on, uh, I went to uh, on the bicycle down Dixboro from the uh, which, uh, from the uh, bike, bike path uh, north to uh, eight twenty-five Lake Street. And I observed uh, the progress of the construction development there. And I'm impressed, okay? Gotta admit, it's a tremendous looking deal. Uh, uh, nothing appears to be going on at the end of last week and I wasn't out there today, but uh, I'd like to know what Mr. uh, Stanley Redman uh, sandwiched in between there, township resident Redman has to say about things and that, and that large hole that's right beside his property on the Chuck Smith side. Uh, interesting to find out about these. And lastly, uh, I'd like to mention, I witnessed the uh, DPW repair on the water line on Lafayette Street. The, the other night, I think it was a Wednesday night, I was on the bicycle. I stayed sixty feet away from that. That was done under live pressure. They had an eight-inch split, a lateral split in the, in the eight-inch, eight or ten-inch line, uh, about five, six feet down and it was under continuous water flooding and pumping and uh, man, the guys got covered with mud. Uh, from time to time, it was really something. It was extremely hard to, to repair something like that. A tremendous effort and they had the knowledge and, and uh, skills and fortitude to complete that in a timely manner. Uh, I was amazed. Thank you very much and that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kibble?
Uh, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to say congratulations to the South Lion High School grads who celebrated a walk-through graduation this past weekend. Many of the graduates were found in Paul Baker Park with their hometown friends and families with cameras in hand, standing in front of the fountain or the colorful planters. Remember, every picture taken at Paul Baker Park is probably passed on to at least ten people. So thank you, South Lion graduates for being great ambassadors for the city by promoting a great positive image of the city. And speaking of Paul Baker Park, I want to thank the DPW workers for their commitment um, to helping keep Paul Baker Park uh, looking as gorgeous as it does. I also want to thank them for their commitment to the city during these times and keeping things looking great. For example, today I saw uh, the DPW crew trimming uh, back trees on Lake Street and cutting the grass and trimming Paul Baker Park. DPW hung in during the dark days of February, March and April and now in this eighty-five degree plus weather, they live outside for at least eight hours a day and they continue to work hard. So if you see a DPW worker, give them a wave of thank you, beep your horn or do what I do, give them the uh, thumbs up. Next, on my COVID-19 uh, comments, if you are in a restaurant, everybody, uh, please remember you need to wear your mask in and you wear your mask until you get seated. And you wear your mask at every other time in which you leave your table. That includes paying your bill, uh, going to another table to speak with somebody or if you're going to use the restroom. Please remember that when you are in a restaurant, the only time you take your mask off is when you are at the table. Um, additionally, I have two products tonight. The first one is Persistence. This is Persistence MD and it is a hand sanitizer. Uh, what makes this product interesting is that it puts a coating on your hand that protects you against germs for about three, three and a half hours. So if you have a lot of things to do, uh, if you're gonna go out there in grocery shop, go to the post office and you're gonna use up about three times instead of using hand sanitizer all the time, you can use this product. It puts a very thin film on your hand and it lasts long. For those that are traveling, you can go to Staples and you can get this great fly kit. It's already prepared for you. Has antiseptic wipes, gloves, a, a headrest cover and two face masks. So if you're gonna travel, uh, Staples does have this product already ready for you to go. So that's it. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and uh, council and have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna um, step in on that twenty-twenty graduates um, conversation as well for just a moment and just really commend these children, um, these young men and women of our community for surviving the pandemic, surviving all the changes that they've been through. They had to come to terms with not going to prom. They had to come terms with not having their graduation ceremony. And these kids have really been stepping stone and they are writing history whether they realize it or not or whether they want to be part of that or not. Here we are writing that history. Candles to them. They have handled it very well. Um, the other thing I want to remind people is along with COVID-19, when you're asking where your mask out in public, please do it. Those people that are standing at the doors of restaurants, stores, they don't want to be there asking you to put your mask on. They have families at home that they need to parent. They don't want to parent you or your children. And some of these are children having to ask you to put their mask on. Please do respect them, respect the job that they're paying, paid to do. Don't take it out on them. What, whatever the government has said as the rules is the rules and just follow them, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. A nice reminder for all of us there as well. Uh, Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, mostly everybody has covered everything I was gonna talk about. Um, I was going to, um, for the people who won, I just wanted to say, um, for the click on Detroit uh, voting, I was just really excited also about the enthusiasm of our residents toward that contest because that was really how you win. And a small community like ours promoting so many of our businesses up that high, I think is really amazing. It really shows some excitement downtown and I was really pleased to see that kind of enthusiasm. A lot of great comments to our business owners on Facebook also, um, encouraging them and telling them that they were keep, they were gonna keep voting. So that was great to see. Um, I jump on the mask thing really quickly is, you know, we see all this crazy stuff going on on the internet about um, you know, the fighting and arguing about masks. I've just been really pleased in the last couple of weeks. I just haven't been anywhere that I haven't seen anybody without a mask on inside a building. So I just have been really pleased and I look for it and I, I, I think our community is doing a really great job. I wish they'd do a little bit better in uh, outside in groupings, but you know, at least they're doing it in, in the building. And then I just want, last thing I want to say is I just, as I mentioned last time, I was really excited about the um, the partnership between Quicksilver Marketing and KV Sports and, and I, in that partnership, uh, uh, Quicksilver has been wanting, has been selling things in bulk, but now that they have KV, they can actually sell things individually. And I went there and got these cool masks. You can get a South Lion one and a South Lion East one. So Quicksilver made it and uh, they're selling them at KV Sports. So you can get um, these there. So that's all. Thank you.
That's great. That's great, Councilmember Dill. Thank you for sharing that. That's great. Um, I just, I really hope um, we're gonna see these census numbers come up. Paul doing the math on that. I know Councilmember Kennedy and all of us have too. I mean, that's just money we get, we can't let that fall through the cracks. So um, if you see your neighbors outside, make sure you actually remind them if they've seen and done the census. I mean, we need, we need to be in the ninety percentile for that. And then um, you know, I just want to remind everyone um, that, you know, try and support our small businesses here in town, in, in the township. Um, you know, if, if we have it here in the township and in the city, let's try and support those folks. They, they need our help and you know, everyone else kind of covered everything, you know, let's, let's be careful. Uh, let's uh, support each other. Let's wear our masks. Let's just do what we gotta do to get through this as a team. So thank you all for a great meeting tonight and I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn.
I'll support.
Second.
Have a great night, all.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.